Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Paul Fraser. I'm the chair of the CMLC. For those of you who don't, probably from my famous TV productions that these guys do periodically. We're going to have a meeting tonight that's going to be information on the question of a feasibility study to see if a townwide water plan makes sense or is feasible. What I'm going to do, we're here tonight, I'm going to have Joel do the introduction, give you a history about what we've been talking about. Greg Jolly will be the town moderator, will be moderating. We'd like to keep the questions kind of focused on the feasibility study. And then we have speakers from the DeFrane Group and our own, Chrissy Haskins.
I got that.
You got that? You're going to do this stuff? And I'll let Joel go from there. Joel, why don't you take it?
Okay, so thanks for coming out tonight. It's cold. And we're here. And we're here to talk about the feasibility study, which we want to do or not do, to determine if it makes sense to do a water supply in Jamaica. Our main purpose here is to learn what exactly a feasibility study is for village water sourcing, what it entails and what delivery entails. To help us understand the research project, Christina Haskins, a project engineer with the DeFrane Group, will be giving a presentation on the kind of data and proposed feasibility study we'll be gathering and how best it can be used to make informed decisions, including exploring ways to help pay for it.
Excuse me, Joel, we're going to go over to your background.
A brief bio about Christina. She's earned her master's in civil engineering from Norwich University after earning her bachelor's in industrial engineering from the Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute. She's also a resident of Jamaica, which makes her share in the concerns we have for how to use study. Also presenting and answering questions tonight about how any town water project will fit within Vermont state regulations and state funding opportunities is Ashley Lupe of the Vermont Agency for Natural Resources in the Drinking Water and Groundwater Protection Division. In addition, we also have on hand to answer questions during the question and answer period, Chris Campney, executive director of the Wyndham Regional Commission since 2010 and a resident of Newfoundland. In addition to Chris, Sarah Lang, Southern Vermont Economic Project Manager with the Brattleboro Development Credit Corporation, has also joined us to help answer questions about how water availability affects economic development in Southern Vermont. A brief note about the format, as Paul mentioned, for about an hour, our two main speakers will present background, context, relevant data, and specific tasks which will be included in the proposed water feasibility study. There will be a separate question and answer period following those presentations, but if there are any questions during the presentations, you are encouraged to speak up and ask our speakers directly. Greg Jolly, our town ma'am, will guide the discussion and be the person to recognize people who wish to speak. And don't forget, the vote to authorize the feasibility study is next week, Tuesday, January 9th at 7:00 PM. And that is not an Australian ballot, that's a floor vote, and it will begin at 7 o'clock. Okay, without further ado, thanks for coming and enjoy the presentation.
Phil Fenner, one more second. You guys bear with me. We have the person from the state, Ashley Lupe, on my cellphone. I'm going to try to have her be able to speak through the Bluetooth speaker, but she is also wanting to hear the presentation from you guys, so I'm going to set the phone over by you so she can hear. So sorry about the technical stuff, but when it comes time for her to talk, I'll get the speaker live.
Close enough, right? That was good.
Okay, I'm going to put you by her.
Hi, Ashley. Thank you, everybody, for coming out. So Joel did a good job introducing me, so I won't have to do that. Let's see if this will work here. So as Joel said, I'm Chrissy Haskins. I am a project manager at DeFrane Group. I have with me here Randy Franny, he is the president and principal engineer of DeFrane Group, and Sam Russ, she is one of our project engineers. So things we're going to talk about, we're going to talk about what this vote is for, what is the current situation that everybody's been talking about for the past 20, 30 years? Why should we do a study? What is the study going to include? What would be the scope of the study? And I'm going to do a brief overview of funding opportunities, and then Ashley is going to go more into detail on the drinking water funding opportunities, the drinking water state revolving fund. So we just want to make it very clear that this is not a vote to design or construct a water system. That is not what we're voting on next week. This is for the study only, and that is just, and I'll go into what we're going to study, but it is just for the study. It is not authorizing anything else beyond that. There has been a lot of discussion, as Joel noted, I was, I am a Jamaica resident, I was on the planning commission for a few years, so I have been involved in the discussions for a few years now. And from what I've been told, these discussions have been going on for decades now. So there really hasn't been any action, there's been a lot of talk about it. Okay, got it. That's Ashley.
I noticed the bottom.
Um, there hasn't been any action, nothing's been going forward, and the discussions kind of just keep going around in circles. There was a town plan update in the past year, and that started to reignite the discussions. The planning commission worked on that update, and the concept of a water system, a village-wide water system, came up again, and there were some discussions about it during the town plan rewrite. There's been a lot of assumptions made during these discussions, and there isn't a lot of data to back those assumptions up. And there is some, you know, local knowledge, you know, people who live in the village who have had their own particular problems, and some people know about that, some don't. But there is just not enough data or facts at this point for anybody to make a decision on whether or not we need a water system here. So there's certainly people in town and possibly, you know, probably even in this room that are on one side of the fence or the other. There are some people who are still on the fence, don't know which way to go, and there are very likely some people who didn't even know there was a fence to take a side off. So the study that we're talking about is just to get the information out to the community so that we can, so that the community can make an informed decision on whether or not to move forward with further planning or a water, you know, move forward with a water system. This is a map, it's not a very good map, but it was, the map that was included in the study that was done in 2000, for those of you who don't know, there was a water, wastewater study done in 2000. And this is one of the maps that came out of it. All those circles up there, you see those, like, those darker gray shaded circles, those are all hundred-foot isolation zones around private wells. And then, it's really hard to see, but kind of in the center there, you see those little white squares? Those are septic systems that were identified during that study. Obviously, they're not, not all the septic systems are on that map, but you can see how the septic systems are within the isolation zones of those wells. The regulations have actually changed since this map was done, and the isolation zones no longer look like a simple little circle. They are a little bit larger now, so that's going to increase that overlap between water and septic, so that I just wanted to show that from, that was what was done in 2000. So why should we do a study? The first step in planning is to define the problem, and I don't think we've done that yet. There's some people who think there's a problem, some people who don't, but we really need to collect some data to actually define the problem. And maybe there isn't a problem, but without the data, we can't decide that. So in the updated town plan, there are some policies and priorities for action that were identified for water and wastewater. So this is the plan that was passed, that was approved this year, so this is our, from our current town plan. And I picked a few pieces out of it, these are one of the priorities for action. These are supporting the policies, so a few of the policies that apply here are support collaborative potable water supply and wastewater planning efforts that build on the Jamaica Village Water Quality and Septic Study and investigate alternatives for water supply and/or wastewater treatment. Second one is to encourage the use of technical assistance to help address the potable water supply and wastewater issues with Jamaica and allow existing buildings to be used at full capacity. And the third one is building on existing water quality and septic study and require the development and review of options for municipal water and/or wastewater. So this is the priority for action that the planning commission came up with to support those policies. And these are the three bullet points, so there's more than that listed under this priority for action, but these are just the ones that apply at this point to what we're talking about tonight. So evaluate feasibility of a water supply and distribution system and/or wastewater collection and treatment system for the village. So this would include engaging local citizens, what we're doing tonight, getting started, getting public input on this, identify, collect, and analyze all relevant reports, findings, and data, and explore funding sources. So on the relevant reports, we already have one, the 2000 study, the Water Quality and Septic Study. This was done in part by the Wyndham Regional Commission. And one question you might be asking is, well, one study was already done, why do we leave it up? So a few things about this study. If you haven't seen it or read it and you want to, I believe it's on the town website. I know Veda and I had talked at one point about getting it up there. So if it's not, maybe it will be. Tomorrow. And otherwise, I think Veda has the hard copy? I think it is on hard copy, they're a little in town office. Perfect. So there is a hard copy available for anybody who likes to read off the paper, or does that have access to computer or internet. So if you want to, that'll be available for you to, to read in nighttime reading. So that study, it really focused on septic systems. There was some focus on water, but it was really more so on septic systems. There was some water quality testing done on wells, but that water quality testing was limited to E. coli and nitrates as a way of identifying failed septic systems. Since that study was done, as I noted, the laws and regulations have changed. In 2010, the water supply rule was updated, and in 2007, the wastewater rule was updated. So some of the things from that study are no longer valid or might have to be changed because of the new regulations. The data collected in that study is now 18 years old, and the solutions, there were, I believe, four solutions presented in that study, and they all focused on wastewater. And right now, the town is looking at potential water solutions here. So a study right now would, as I noted, gather data so that we can make an informed decision. It would identify existing problems, if any, determine the need or lack thereof for a water system, municipal public water system. The study would present data evaluations and recommendations to the community and obtain public input. We'd be looking for, we would have a meeting at the completion of the study to present it everything, and we'd be looking for input back from the community. I believe that the select board is, is looking for, the community is to put on whether or not to move forward. There are a lot of other steps beyond this study in developing a water system, and the select board doesn't want to move forward with that, move forward with that without your approval. So I believe there very likely would be another vote to move forward with any sort of planning at that point. Our studies, what we proposed on, is a survey of the properties within the village. So a survey of properties within the village, we would be putting out a questionnaire, this is similar to what was done in 2000, there was a questionnaire done at that point, questions on existing wells, septics, existing issues and concerns that people may have. There was about a 55% return rate on the surveys from the 2000 study, and part of that is very likely due to people not understanding the questions or not knowing if they have the answers to the questions. So if necessary, we would actually have somebody come out and meet with people to help answer those questions and to get that information from the property owners in the village. There may be some field investigations to try to locate wells and septic systems. This would not include digging anything at all, not going to date up the property. It would just be looking around, just seeing what we can find. That map we showed before, I don't know if you could see it or not, but there was a lot of properties that didn't show septic systems, because we don't know where they are. So trying to find as much of that information as possible. I believe the 2000 survey had a little spot for people to sketch in their property and show where their, where their septic system was, and it's likely that people don't know where they are, or they didn't know how to do the sketch, or. So we would be working with our engineers as well as the planning commission, they have offered to help out with going out and meeting with people to get this information. And then we would be doing some water quality testing with select wells. If you don't want your well tested, we're not going to force you to have your well tested. We'd be looking to test about 10 wells, and this testing would include not just E. coli and nitrates as it was in 2000, but also looking for other contaminants, there are a lot of other contaminants that the state requires public water systems to test for. So some of these are arsenic, nitrate, nitrite, chloride, sodium, iron, and manganese. So these are some of the common contaminants that we would be looking for. The state has a lot of GIS data available.
What is that?
Geographic Information System.
What?
It's geographic information system data, so it's electronic data showing things like roads, parcels, locations of wells that they, they have mapped, source wa, surface waters, hazardous waste sites. The state has a lot of data available for mapping purposes, so this data has geographic coordinates on it, so we can actually put it on a map of Jamaica and show you where things are. So we would gather the data that's available from the state and put that together with field data that we've collected, and create a map of the village showing where septic systems are, wells, roads, buildings, the parcel boundaries, all of these things that affect water quality and that are requirements for setbacks for wells and septic systems, just to get an idea of the existing conditions and what kind of overlaps there may be in those setbacks. And then there would also be an evaluation of all the survey data that we collect, as well as the water quality data. We would also estimate current and projected water usage. So the state has a table that, that estimates what a typical house uses for water, and various types of commercial uses, so we would use some of that data and estimate the current water usage in the village. And then we would project that out using population projections and other trends. And then we would look at the existing wells and try to estimate the capacity of those existing wells. This was also done in 2000, there was a capacity evaluation done at that time, and there were some concerns with the existing capacity not being adequate for future needs. So we would look at that again and see where we're at right now. And we would evaluate that available capacity in the existing wells in regard to the projected water use, but also in regard to future commercial growth. Commercial businesses tend to use more water than residential homes, so if we're looking for growth here, and I know the planning commission, that's a hot topic for them, is economic development and growth of the village, so that's something that we would be looking at as part of the study. We would then, based on all of that information, all the mapping and all of the data we collected and all of the evaluations, we would identify a need or lack thereof for a water system, make recommendations for the next steps that the village should take, and then we would take all of this information and have another meeting and present it all to you and obtain your input on it. I think it's important to note what the study will not include. We are not going to design or construct a water system. We are not going to identify a source or construct a source. And we cannot estimate the cost of a water system without having a lot more planning and, without having a water source, without having all of these things, we can't, we can't do an estimate because we don't know how much piping there's going to be, we don't know what the service area is going to be, we don't know what the water demand is going to be, we don't know where the well or surface water source is going to be. So without all of that, we really can't tell you how much it's going to cost. And I know that's a big question, yes?
Thank you. So the $7,000 feasibility study, if it even just makes sense, and let's say the town people vote yes, and you do your study, is that two months, six months, 10 months to a final hard copy?
Um...
About, roughly?
I don't remember if we had a schedule in there, but it's not, it's not a year-long study, it's probably a few months.
And then, part of that question is, so this feasibility study comes out, you present it to the town mothers and fathers and citizens, and they say, okay, they want to do it, let's just say someone says that. The next phase would be then to, would be design and construction and identify what, would that be the next study?
So right now, so the process for developing a water system includes a lot of planning. This is like step 1A. This isn't even step 1, step 1 would be preliminary engineering. So this is step 1A of that, identify the problem. And then there's a bunch of other planning that goes into that, including identification of a water source. So that would be part of the planning. Designing, construction would come later after all the planning is done.
Would the next phase, you know, this is seven Gs to do this theoretically, not the actual excavating that the pipes are, but all these different phases, would that be, this next phase after this, can you give me, it can be off 10 or 20%, is that a $10,000, $20,000 project? Is that $175,000? Just, just to get a scope for myself.
The, would you say the next step would be looking for water source?
Yeah, it would be part of the preliminary engineering report, which would include test well investigations or feasibility pilot studies for a surface source. Usually in a small community like this, it's ground water. So the preliminary engineering report would look at alternatives, select the best one, develop cost estimates for the different alternatives, recommend the best one, but coupled with that is the investigation towards a source of supply. So until the source of supply is defined, and we know quality and quantity, we can't really get to those cost estimates for you to make a decision. So the next step would be what they call a PDR, Preliminary Engineering Report, including a source investigation report.
So that's kind of two, there's two different parts moving forward. So there's, there's a preliminary engineering report, which this is, this study would actually be useful as that, as part of that. We would be able to take the data obtained during the study and use it in a preliminary engineering report. At the same time, we would have to be looking for a source, because we can't complete the preliminary engineering report without knowing what the source is.
Have you guys built for a small town somewhere in the market, and I'm sure you've scratched initial water, public water project, have you done this before?
Randy Franny is not in here, he's our president and principal engineer, he has four years of experience in water systems, and he has worked with communities to develop water systems.
What's the lowest price you've ever seen a small town?
Yeah, the capital costs are offset by the grants, and it's a function of the median household income, a lot of cases, and the funding criteria, but you can figure about $400 a year for water.
Is this like a $300,000 project on the low end, or is it?
That's probably a million dollars.
To do the whole town?
To, to do a water system that hasn't been designed yet, we don't know the funding, but for customers on that system who pay all the capital costs and all the operating maintenance costs, it's going to be about $400 a year.
And that $400 goes to?
Goes to the water system, whether it's a fire district that's defined, or the village, or the town, but that political entity that owns and operates the water system. But that's about the going rate, and the cost, the capital costs are over here, but the funding catches up to that such that that customer cost is about $400 a year.
And that's for a typical residential user? Yes?
Excuse me, don't you have to estimate the time, the process, the timeline to build, you've got all that other information, people agree they want to do it, and then it's got to be a project over seven years, you've got to get right away, so you've got to get the state saying, yeah, let's tear up that road, so you can put that pipe in, how long does that process take?
Could you repeat, could you repeat the question?
He's asking, how long does the process take to actually construct the water system when you're looking at considerations such as right of way, such as working within the state road here, getting approval from the state? So once you, one, right of way would actually come during that design phase. We'd get at that point, if there's right of way necessary, that would all be obtained concurrently with design. The construction is really going to depend on how, what the extent is, and there is no reason that you have to construct the entire water system all at once. You can construct it, you know, do a portion of Route 31st, and then extend out from there as, you know, financials allow. Yes?
One last question. As I don't know where these pipes, is it theoretically, I don't, I forget the theoret- is it possible our new lovely sidewalks will have to be ripped up to do this? All that money we spent and time?
Um, yeah. And this one is hard to say if sidewalks would need to be ripped up. We typically try to design to minimize disturbance to sidewalk, you know, concrete and pavement. We try to stay within grass, because it's less expensive to put the grass back.
So the pipes would be, theoretically, possibly the sidewalk side close to the buildings, versus the side?
I rise, I rise only because she's being kind and gentle, but we'd like to continue to stay focused on the feasibility study. I think we've jumped downward there, thank you.
Yes?
Is it a state requirement to have a water feasibility study in place before the septic feasibility study? Is it a requirement to have a water feasibility study in place before the septic feasibility study?
Yes. There's no requirement to do, to look at water before.
Waste water memory?
I think one of the reasons that the town is having the vote for water at this point is because it's typically less expensive to design and construct a water system than a municipal sewer system for maintenance and operation. Judy?
I'm concerned about payment and how that's going to be included within the feasibility study. I know that there are, there's time for grants. But the larger amount of population of this town of Jamaica is actually with people who are, as I call them, outlanders. And I'm concerned about the payment, even though I know that we really need to have a water system within the village. But how will payment take place? Will it be prorated among the outlanders and the townspeople? So, I would like to see that somehow within the feasibility study, not just the grants that are available. But how will the town pay for this?
So, what Judy is asking is the cost of designing and construction of the water system. Typically, that is charged to the users of the system through a user rate. In this case, because the water system would be limited to the village, Judy's bringing up the thought that, you know, the people outside of the village wouldn't be users of the water system. So, basically asking what type of rate structure would there be? And at this point, we can't tell you what kind of rate structure there would be because that would really be up to the community after we know what the cost is. You know, it's really going to be up to whether the users themselves can pay for it or if they can't, does it need to extend outside? So, at this point, we really can't tell you that. But there are a lot of different rate structures for water systems. There's fixed fee, there's variable fee. There is one system that I know of that does actually charge people who don't connect to the water system. They actually charge everybody in the town, whether or not you're connected. But I think that's in Chelsea.
Oh, really?
Yes. It's the only one I know of that doesn't.
Most of the water systems, the customers pay everything. And that has typically the one, the method that's selected. But there is some examples of the entire residents of the town funding the capital cost, debt retirement, and the users paying operation and maintenance cost. But typically, the customers of the water system pay everything.
By customer, that means the people who are actually connected to it, using the water. The water is actually coming into their homes. I believe in Chelsea, the situation was that the users were paying for the system and the town voted to extend that to the rest of the town. But that's really beyond what we can discuss at this point. We don't know what the costs are going to be and what the rate structure would be. That would be something that gets developed during the planning phase. Recommendations on rate structures.
Yeah, so, the people who already want the water supply are convinced. So, that's easy. So, there are a lot of people going to vote next, hopefully, a lot of people are going to vote next Wednesday on whether or not to open the box at all. And they're sitting here, I think, saying, well, how does this affect me then? Why should I vote for it? Why should I take $7,000 out of the town treasury to even pay for a feasibility study? So, I think that there are other people here who could answer that question who are not engineers. And I think maybe Chris Campney might be able to help with a question like that. How does it benefit the people who don't drink water out of the new well?
Do you want to add an hour, or do you want me to do that?
I would like to kind of, I would like to stick to the original plan and then maybe expand on it later. But I think we've given them kind of a tight timeframe, so let's stick to the plan.
Let's make a note of that question for when we do a presentation.
We're almost done with our part. And then, I know Ashley wants to talk about some funding. And then we may be able to talk about some benefits after that.
I have just one quick question. If you could talk a little bit about the differences. So, say we're talking about having a water supply delivery system for the village. How would that affect, say, a restaurant on Route 30 in the middle of town? How would that change their lives in terms of being able to operate? I mean, I understand that there are different clearances between different pipes and wells, and it's different with the piped water. Just briefly, can you explain that a little bit?
Sure. A restaurant has to have a public water supply. They can't operate off of a private well. It has to be like, it has to be approved by the state and permitted as a public water supply. If they cannot meet the setbacks required for a public water supply, the state absolutely 100% will not approve it. And if they can't meet that, can't get the approval, then they cannot get their Department of Health license to operate. So, and that's not just looking at a setback from your own septic system. It's looking at setbacks from everything around you. The buildings on other properties, the septic system on other properties. So, it's not limited to your parcel. And the parcels in the village are very small. And it is very difficult to meet those setbacks. And there was one case this past year that they were not able to meet that. They could not get their public water supply approval. Yes?
Is that law also, is that a grandfathered in for previous businesses in the same site? Um, we've had a number of different restaurants in the area. Would that be grandfathered in?
From a previous restaurant to a new restaurant?
Or previous restaurant to a new reopened restaurant? Would that be grandfathered in? Or would that be, would they be required to be connected to a private well?
I am not sure how the Department of Health looks at grandfathering. I know that for, for other buildings that technically, the rules now say that if you serve 25 people or more from one to two months out of the year, that you have to have a public water supply.
You do, you do not?
That you do. But there are a lot of buildings across the state that meet those requirements that are not a public water supply because they've been operating for so long. I don't know if it's, and I don't know if Ashley can answer this, but I don't know if it's that the state just doesn't track them all down or if they are really grandfathered. But to answer your question, I don't know if, I don't know how the Department of Health looks at the grandfather situation.
Okay, I'm going to read from commission. I don't know the exact answer to that question either, but my sense is, just based anecdotal, if you're an existing, these existing businesses that, like delis and other things, are in some respects kind of frozen in time and pray that their systems don't break. The ones that go up for sale, I know we've, I'm also the chair of the village trustees and new fan. And we've seen a number of possible deals will struggle or fall through because of the water, wastewater system. Because what the new owner wants to do can't be done under existing rules and regulations. And since that business closed down, it was going to reopen. They have to buy the new standards. But what we could do for you guys is actually bring in a Department of Health. Ashley maybe would answer these questions too. But we could bring these folk in to answer these specific questions.
Water or wastewater?
It's all of the above. You have to meet all the Department of Health requirements. So, but a lot of it, you'll hear, a lot of it goes to the septic issues because the well is kind of a fixed point, right? But then you, the septic system, you've got the septic tank, the distribution box, distribution field. And in some of these lots, right, some of them are a tenth of an acre.
But my question is, would that be alleviated if we had a wastewater system?
And that's what we, that's part of what this is going to get at what water, what part of the equation, what part of what they were proposing to do would get at, what would the drinking water side do for that whole part of the equation? We're probably also going to have to figure out what the wastewater implications are too.
There's two different, it's confusing to look at water as a solution to wastewater.
Yeah.
But by putting, the concept is by putting in a municipal water system, you eliminate all the private wells and then allow more space for septic systems for, for, because you don't have the setbacks anymore from the wells. So, septic system replacements or increases in size. And like I said before, I think the reason the select board is looking at water at this point is because it is less expensive to install a municipal water system than it is a municipal sewer system. It's a lot in the construction and in the operation. It's also easier typically to find a water source than a wastewater discharge point. Rob?
The water system that they're, if you're trying to manage or trying to manage, would that include fire hazards and fire departments?
That is something that would need to be considered by the community. So, a municipal water system can provide fire protection if the community wants that. It doesn't have to. But if we, that would be something determined in the preliminary phase so that we can design it for fire protection or not. So, a water system providing fire protection would likely provide more insurance rates in the village.
It will change our ICO. But you would want to have non-water capacity because of the structure fire can drain your whole system, which means nobody in the village has water per day, day to day.
And that's why it's important to know it at the very beginning if the community wants fire protection. There are water, there are a lot of water systems in the state do have fire protection. Because it really doesn't cost that much more to design it for fire protection. But there are some that don't have it. Continue enough?
If you want, yeah. We're wrong.
So, a quick overview of funding opportunities. There is, probably the biggest one to look at is the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund. And this is often referred to as DWSRF. They have a planning loan program and a construction loan program. And I'm not going to talk about the details because we have Ashley left on the phone here, and she will talk about the details. So, skip ahead. Another option is USDA rural development. They do have a construction loan and grant program. The grant amounts do depend on median household income and user rates. We have talked with, is anybody here from RD? Okay, some is potentially going to show up. But we have talked with RD about Jamaica in particular. And currently, unless the user cost was significantly high, currently, they don't believe that Jamaica would qualify for grants in their program. Another option, more so for planning, would be the Agency of Commerce and Community Development. They have two options, a municipal planning grant and a community block development grant, which is referred to as CBBG. These are typically smaller grants, less than $10,000. And it is a very competitive program to get money from. So, it is an option to do small, study, small sections of the PBR if you're doing it in small steps. It, $10,000 wouldn't cover the entire planning phase. But it is something that the town can consider.
And that is a priority funding for, for any systems really that help support villages and downtowns.
And that's something that the Select Board and Planning Commission, that I'm sure going to reach out, could definitely help out with. And I think that is all we had, yes. So, Ashley can provide some information on DWSRF.
Let's hope this works.
Is it my turn?
Ashley, you still there?
I'm still here.
Okay. And I'm going to, I'm trying to get you connected to the speaker here. Hold on one second.
Okay.
Okay, it says it is connected. Say something, Ashley.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now, but you're not on the speaker. Let's see here. Hold on one second. Let's see. I use this every morning to listen to the radio. And it works just fine. So, I figured that right now, we'd have issues. So, let's see. Well, let's try it with the phone speaker. Ashley, say something. Let's see if folk can hear you okay.
Say something to see if anybody can hear me okay.
Can folk generally hear her? Okay. So, can I ask you a favor? We've got handouts from Ashley that are going around now. We have 30 copies. So, hopefully, that's enough.
I have it up on the screen today.
So, Ashley, I'm going to put you here, kind of in the center. Okay. So, hopefully, folk can hear. The speaker I did did not work, but hopefully, I can hear. So, we'll listen attentively.
Okay, sounds good. Yes, as Chrissy mentioned, I represent the Drinking Water State Revolving Loan Program. The program has been around for about 20 years. It was principally funded, and still is funded, by the federal government. And we get an annual grant every year from the Art and Protection Agency. But at this point, we actually, basically, is a revolving loan program. You can be loan money out and you will pay us back.
Hey, Ashley, hold up one second till these things get handed out to folk here.
Can you hold on a second?
From loan repayments that we have from the federal government.
Ashley?
It's a, somebody need to say something?
Can you hold on a minute?
Sure.
Thank you.
Let's make sure it's up.
There are some more seats in the front if people want to hear.
All right, I think we're all set. Okay. So, I was just giving a lot of boring information about the program, which nobody probably cares about. But that we have a lot, we have, we have, we're a very solvent loan program. And that's principally what we are, is a loan program. We do have some subsidy available on an annual basis. But it's, there are a lot of requirements associated with it as read. I know it was mentioning, a lot of it is tied to median household income. And there's kind of this sweet spot for where you have to be. And right now, Jamaica, kind of at a 30% view, isn't in that sweet spot. So, right now, Jamaica would not qualify for any subsidy. It would just be accessing our loan program. But I know Chrissy had mentioned that we have a planning loan and a construction loan program. We can fund, we can definitely fund planning. But in a situation where, with Jamaica that actually doesn't have an existing community water system, we would not be able to fund the new water system unless there was an extreme documented public health risk. So, we could do the planning side of things. And then you could then use, and I know we're all talking hypothetical because you guys haven't even decided if you even wanted to do feasibility yet. But just in terms of the available programs is, we would, we would essentially be the on-ramp into a rural development loan. Rural development requires a lot of pre-work happen before you even apply to their program. And that's where the, our planning loan program would come into play. Where the benefit of our, of our loan... Um, where, um, the, the benefit of our, of our loan program is, is, I like to consider it a bridge loan, is, um, there's no interest and no payments on the loan while you're in the planning and construction phases. Um, so, we give you, and we give you a long time to kind of develop a project. For example, if you did go forward with this feasibility study and took out a loan from us, is, um, we would set the loan repayment terms out five years. So, we would give you a, a long time to, uh, both do the feasibility and then kind of decide what you want to do with the next step. And so, if it takes a year or two for the community to decide what the next step is, that's okay, um, because then, say, after two or three years, you say, all right, I think we're ready to do something else. We're ready to do source exploration. So, then you would, we would upend the loan that you have, and then we would kick that repayment start date out another, like, another five years. So, essentially, we, we allow you plenty of time to develop a program, a project, without requiring you to pay back the loan. Um, now, if you decide that you don't want to do the project, you do have to pay the loan back, but it is paid back, um, over five years at zero percent. So, it's a, it's a relatively low risk, and I know the dollar amount that you're talking right now may seem like a lot of money, but, um, uh, but, but frankly, it's, you know, over the course, if, say you didn't go forward with the project and you just paid for feasibility, you're talking like $1,500 a year, um, for five years to pay it back, and, um, I think to get a better understanding of what the potential infrastructure needs are in a community is, is, it's, it's really important to do, um, and I'm not just saying that as, like, a funder because I want you, I want you to come take my money. Um, you know, I've, I've been in the position of you guys, I've been a select board member in a town, and, and, um, having viable infrastructure is really the core of a community. Um, it's what, it's what provides livelihood to a downtown. It's what keeps people coming and keeps people wanting to come to town because, and I know you mentioned this during the presentation, is, it's, it, people start to struggle to open up commercial, um, buildings if there's not, um, adequate infrastructure. Um, also, people start having trouble selling their homes if, um, if they can't, um, if they can't drink the water or if the septic system has failed, um, and vice versa. That's, I know why you're looking at either water or wastewater, and certainly, as Chrissy had mentioned, water is more often the more affordable alternative. I'm not going to say cheapest because we all have enough, not that it's cheap, um, but, um, often the more affordable alternative. Um, and, um, and so, just from, uh, somebody who appreciates infrastructure, um, I, I think having, having some sort of community-based water or wastewater or what have you really contributes to a, a healthy, vibrant community. And, and in terms of, like, who's paying for it, um, I think that that also is, is a useful conversation to have when trying to sort of sell it to the people who don't live on what would, what could be the water system is, is that it's supporting a vibrant community. It's what, it's what people want to live in Jamaica for is because we have a vibrant downtown, and there's a place to go to hang out, um, and that's why you support community infrastructure. That's why people are on it, support it. Um, so, um, so the, the, kind of getting back to the loan program, the process that, that, that we would have is, there's a, there's a funding application that, uh, Dufresne Group would assist the select board in completing. Um, it requires, at this point, only select board authority. It doesn't require a vote of the voters at this point. Um, and the, uh, the loan is actually underwritten by the municipal bond bank, so, uh, the agency that I work for, my office, would, uh, do the preliminary approval authorization of loan, and then we would send it on to the bond bank for their underwriting. Um, a loan this small, it, there's no, in my opinion, there's no risk of it not being approved. Um, it's certainly with the vote that, um, will occur next week, um, i- if there is community support that will strengthen the loan application, but it's not required. Um, but, uh, you know, I mean, it, it seems like this community is, um, it would feel uncomfortable getting community buy-in, and that, and I, I, I don't, I don't have an opinion one way or the other. I think that's fine. Um, so, the, the loan process usually takes, um, and I know Brett and Chrissy are probably going to roll their eyes at me, but it, it, it could take as short as two or three months, um, depending on how complete the application is and how complex the project is. Um, some projects take longer to review, um, proposals take longer to review, but this one's pretty straightforward. Um, so, it's, it's entirely possible that a loan could be approved if I received an application shortly after your vote, um, within, within a couple of, uh, you know, a couple of months. And I'm going to stop talking for a minute because I've had a cold for the past couple days, and I'm not allowing you guys to ask a question.
Does anyone have any questions for Ashley?
She was very clear. And she gave us a very nice explanation that you almost want to say yes.
What was that?
You did good.
Questions, really?
No questions.
Um, okay, well, my job here is done then. No, I'm just, um, you know, I, 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 I know, uh, that the community is struggling a little bit with, um, and, and Chrissy alluded to it at the beginning of her presentation about, well, we don't know what we don't know, and, and it's, it's always a challenge. You're like, well, do we want to know what we don't know? Um, and it's, it's going to start to become an issue, and I know Brett's been in the business a long time, Chrissy's been around a long time. I've been, I've been around for over a decade. You start to see communities where, um, where it just seems to sort of start falling apart because you can't sell property, you can't develop your commercial downtown because you don't have a community water system, or because the community water system's been neglected. Um, you maybe start having people get sick, or, um, or just, you're, you're not able to frankly sell your house because, um, because you can't replace your septic system because it's too close to the well. Is, this is really when things start reaching a critical, a critical mass of, like, problems, and then it's like, hurry up and fix it as opposed to, you know what, it's not a problem yet, let's, let's take our time, let's put in the effort, let's do the planning properly, um, and in the right order so that we're not rushed into it because suddenly we have, you know, 10 foreclosures in the, in the community because they can't afford to replace their septic system because the well is too close, um, or vice versa. The well, the, the well has failed, and I have no other place to put it beside the middle of the leach field. So, um, um, so, um, that's, you know, it's, it's good to start the planning before it's a crisis, and then you can look at all of your funding options without feeling like you have to just go with whoever will give you the money right there. Um, you know, I, I know also Chrissy mentioned a couple of other funding, um, opportunities with CDVG, um, and with, uh, Rural Development. Uh, just to echo what, what she had mentioned is, CDVG municipal, um, planning grants are, are highly competitive, and they also, they only have, I think, one or two funding cycles a year, so it's the type of thing that if you, if you just miss the window, it's, it's got to be another six to 12 months before you comply again, and then you have to wait many months to see if you get it, and if you don't get it, it just, it just prolongs the inevitable. Um, and that's, and that's why, I mean, again, I'm biased, I love my program, um, but our, our program is really, um, been successful in helping a lot of communities get past that hump that, like, gosh, should we or should we do something, you know, we're struggling with investing, like, that, that's, that's why we created the program in the first place. And I know Chrissy and Brett, I mean, Brett's been around longer than our program's been around, but he's, he's definitely been a, 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 a frequent flyer of the program, and I think both for the benefit of his clients, um, and, and for the commu-, I mean, certainly for the communities. Um, so, I, I would advocate for planning now.
Thank you. Thanks, Ashley. So, I think we're all set on that. If anybody has any questions about funding, um, you can get in touch with me, um, at any time, and I can get answers for you if I have them ready.
And Ashley, you still there?
I am.
Um, you, you said that you, you can, if, if they decide to move forward with this, didn't you say that you could come down and meet with them if you, uh, if they've got other deep, more detailed questions, if they decide to move forward?
Absolutely. Yeah, I mean, I, I certainly, um, if, if, if you guys are, if the, if the vote is successful next week, um, I think it would definitely be prudent to, to meet with, um, town officials to kind of just give you a better understanding of the loan program, um, and, and sort of the options, uh, you know, like I said, unfortunately, unless there is a, a true documented, serious public health risk, we can't fund the construction of the, but, but that's, but that is so far down the road. I mean, this is years down the road. Um, you know, but we could fund everything up until, we could do source exploration, we could do preliminary engineering, we can do final design, we can do all of the steps to get to putting a shovel in the ground. Um, but yeah, absolutely. I, and I can do evening meetings, I can do day meetings. I would prefer not a Saturday afternoon meeting because I've just requested one from another water system, um, but yeah, I'm available.
And we could get other state officials too, right? Like if we get folk wanted Department of Health to be here to talk about the issues that came up about opening up a new restaurant or a restaurant that's closed and reopening, we could get other folk down here too, I would think.
I, I would imagine, I mean, I, I don't, I don't work with the Department of Health anymore. Um, when I was with the Drinking Water and Groundwater Protection Division, I, I did, I did work with them, but I, I'm sure that they would send somebody from their food and lodging down.
We'll get you, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Ashley? Not taking over from the moderator, just, the ledger recovered from her cold. Thank you, Ashley, appreciate it.
You're welcome. And definitely, um, you know, my contact information is on the fact sheet, so feel free to email me or call me directly. I, I, um, I'd like to think I'm pretty responsive.
Thanks. Happy New Year.
Good luck.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. And I can attest that Ashley, um, does do a lot for communities. She'll come down and show me, and she really does help out in communities, um, when you're working with her.
So, I know you've all been asking questions, asked presentations going on, but now this is the public part where we will dig in a little more, and it's up to the body, this body, as to what direction you want to go. Really, I'd like to reiterate, this is about money for the feasibility, moving forward with the feasibility study. We can go on to steps B, C, F, Q if you want, but I think it'd be behoove us to keep our focus tight. But if you want to talk about other things, we can do that, and if they can answer, I'm sure they'd be willing to. So, is, who would like to start? I'm going to go here, she hasn't asked a question yet.
It's not really a question, it's only a statement. I have been a homeowner in Jamaica for 50 years. I have been a second homeowner, I am a resident, and I am a senior citizen. I do not use the services that I pay my taxes for, but I have never, never resented paying my taxes, and I feel that this study, which is really, from what we understand, is not very expensive. If we borrow the money, we're talking about $1,600 a year. I mean, that's practically nothing, and my property value is going to go down if we do not have a viable village. And we see now that we have had the experience this year where we've had someone come in and try and get a business going and not having been able to continue that business. Well, I would like to have a restaurant downtown, I would like to have certain services, I desperately want to have a market, and if it costs a little bit of money, well, so be it. I mean, I think that just my investment in my property is worth, it, it would lose its value, and I think that this young lady, Lou, was so clear about that. So, I just want to talk about being outside the village and what I feel, and I strongly feel that this should be done, especially when you see the price. I mean, we're not talking about a lot of money.
I'm going to play devil's advocate to you because I live outside the village, just outside that zone.
I'm sorry?
I play, I'm going to play devil's advocate to you.
Yes, please.
I live outside that zone, on that map. Um, you know, we get bond vote for the town garage, the high schools, such as drive education. As a struggling young family, I find it hard to make, and me, the taxes keep going up for this, keep going up for that, uh, especially when I don't get any benefit out of it. Most of my life does not revolve around the center of my village. I work out of town, my wife works out of state. Um, there are those of us out there who don't see the benefit in this.
I can understand your point of view.
I'm your fire chief in fire protection, and I'm like, that's great, you've got fire hydrants out of this deal, but I may not be able to afford the fire department and the guys and the equipment to hitch up to the hydrant to fight the fire because we'll be taxed to the extreme. I know it could be user fee, but at some point you're going to have to, the infrastructure to set it all up, to buy the land, to pay for, you're going to have to have a crew to run this. Water system, waste system, the infrastructure, somebody's going to have to take care of it. Keith and the boys, they deal with roads, not water lines and water systems, and there's testing, and there's all sorts of stuff. I, I know it might be based in some, you know, considered assumptions, but I'm already talking to other people about their water systems, and I'm already seeing the expenses coming, and I'm like, I can't see a small core group of village people paying user fees going to make that price add. They're not going to be able to afford that. So, they're going to have to rely on the outliers to make up for it, and I'm like, oh, I can't justify.
Well, I think that if we, outliers, I don't see the outliers paying the same amount as the villagers.
I don't want to pay them.
I mean, when I live in a town, I pay water, I pay my water bill, and if I use a gallon of water, I'm built for it. I was built for it in the town. So, I don't see that if someone is in town that I would pay the same amount, but I can see that because I, I come to the stores, I, I would like to have a restaurant here, I like the idea that if I come to the town hall, I, uh, we have things that are happening in the church, so I do use the village. Do I work here? No, but I use it, and I find that, I see that some of the businesses are going to have trouble selling themselves. Uh, I don't know if anybody's going to be interested in buying businesses in this town anymore. It was very different when I came here 50 years ago, but we're talking about something that could be very serious, and I would hate for Jamaica to become a ghost town. And I see so many properties that are on sale on Main Street, and I'm wondering, are they going to sell? And one of the problems that they do have is the water system, the septic system. It's a big problem, and I think that those people who do have it should pay a much heavier burden than I pay. Um, it would be like maybe 60, 40, or 70, 30, or something like that, but I'm willing to put some money, not all.
You pay my share.
But my share.
Joe?
I'd like to maybe bring up the fact that we actually have several situations in town where the neighbors themselves have collaborated and solved their water and sewer problems. We have four houses up on Pike Falls Road, right just there, Fred and up through there. They share, those four houses share a water system. They each have their own septic system. The town office shares their septic system with hot blast works. The town office also has the well on its property that furnishes water to the Daggett House. The library and the church have just collaborated, the library now has a flush toilet, and they share a water system. So, and the, the Jamaica House and Astor's and what was the Chocolate Barner's Coffee Shop share a septic system. But this- But if, if there are issues in town, I think the neighbors could collaborate and come up with their own solutions, if they have a feasible.
I'm moving to somebody else. Joel?
So, we can't assume anything, but, and I know how the people in the town feel, they want the town to be here, it's a benefit to us, we live here and we like to have it the way it is. But how would you feel if there was no village? How would that affect your property value, and how would that affect your life? Now, this is not, this vote next Wednesday is not yes or no, we're gonna put in a water system. It's yes or no, we're gonna find out if we should put in a water system. So, you don't know the answer to the question I just asked, and neither do I. The town may go on fine the way it is. But things change, regulations change. We talked about the cafe across the street, they can't drill a well anywhere, because wherever they want to drill a well is less than 100 feet from somebody else's septic system. So we want to find out if there's a better way to do it. And, and if we mistake this and miss this, then if it fails, it fails without our help. At least this way, once we do this research, we can find out how we will be affected by it. We can't find out how much it will cost yet, we can't find out how it will affect your life, but it could affect your life. And if it were me, I mean, I know how I feel, I have a good water supply, I've tested it. I have two good water supplies and two good septic systems. So I get nothing from this except that I like to see the village survive. And if everybody in this town has a good water supply, and we can have businesses in this town, then we'll find out for a small amount of money that we don't need it. But if, if this can't happen, then that small amount of money will warn us at least that we have to think about the future.
Jonathan, and then I'd like for a call.
Can I give a small, brief presentation of some thoughts that I've been collecting, because I'm a businessman? Would that be okay, or is that, is that away from the concept?
Can we put up that poll first?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Really quick, just, just to help focus this thing out. The distinction is whether we, the question of whether we should go through this, waits until after we find out whether we can go through this. Tonight, we're trying to decide if we're going to spend the money to find out if we can, after which, we'll have the discussion of whether we should.
Which will bring up another discussion, and another floor.
Exactly.
So, there's plenty of meetings ahead of us, and there's plenty of time for us to vote this up or down. So let's just, again, keep in the feasibility area, but Jonathan has taken off his coat, so now we're in.
He's coming.
Oh, he's coming, okay, give it. Go for it.
So, thank you for everyone's points of view, by the way, they're very good. Bon, oh, wow. Bonnie, I, I really respect and love what you have to say, because one of my big concerns about living in this town after, I think, 37 years, is this town, is this town because of the culture and the nature of what it is? We're not a metropolis, we're not a commercial district, we never will be. Certainly back in the 1600s, 1700s, 1800s, we were a different economy, we had mills, we had farms, that's all over. A couple of things that were said tonight are completely incorrect in the perspective of us becoming a more vibrant town. We're a pretty cool town as it is, but I want you to know, just even today on the Wall Street report, stores next year will close more and more. Everyone's going online, the cow is out of the gate. And I can say this with a lot of knowledge, not only am I a retailer in town, I'm also a wholesaler that sells to companies all around the country. And anyone that believes, and I'm not a guest or for this, I just want to get one thing straight, our town will not die with this or without this. Retail is over as we know it. If anyone's here brave enough, how many of you ordered for this Christmas period products from Amazon? Come on, I know more than you did. So this thing about shop local, it's cool, we can shop all over. D&amp;K's has a wonderful, vibrant business, the people at North Country General, when they bought that property or pursued it, they knew all about how much water would be available, they knew that walking into it. So the point I'm trying to make, and hopefully it's correct, is that I think our town is more of a residential town than it is this commercial thing. And I have a store right next door, and I have a website, so I'm a businessman, but I think it's delusional to think that the possibility of us expanding to water districts and sewer districts is gonna make the town explode. That is not gonna happen.
You can predict that with certainty.
Excuse me, what?
You can predict that with certainty.
Yes, I, I will, just from the economics of looking at where retail and sales are bent, so I just wanted to mention that. And it's not that I'm against this or up for it, I just, there were some things said by this gal, and I politely and respectfully didn't agree with some of them, some of the scare tactics about the failed septics, there's not many failed septics in this town, very little. And what Bonnie said too, collectively getting together, we test our water every year in Jamaica here, our well is phenomenal, our septic, we get pumped every year. So I don't know how catastrophic and how traumatic and problematic it is for real estate. There's another issue that would have made our town boom, but I won't even bring that up tonight, because that's another topic. But again, I respect what you're all doing, and I think it's really cool that we can do this as a community in a town and listen. And last but not least, we have a lot of people on fixed incomes in this town, and we have some demographics on the lower end that struggle, so I agree with what you're saying about the taxes. We have to be careful that we're very fiscally responsible and we spend money properly. So, thank you for letting me come up here, and I love all you guys.
Rob, and then Karen?
So I think for this, this part of it, it's only for $7, net. It's, do you think of it, you get the loan, $1,500 a year, what's that, $2 bucks a year for everyone, you know, even the aldermen to spend to help the community out? And it's just a study, it might not be feasible. So I, I just ask my question.
Karen?
Now, what do you see? A different view than Jonathan sees playoff and being in retail here? People are coming to Jamaica all the time, looking for something to do. You have people in the state park coming in, they're always wanting to go to places to eat, or looking for more shops, the yoga place is great, but they're always looking for more. We have these wonderful sidewalks, and we love walking up and down the sidewalks. I think, I think we need to do this study in the past, and see what our options are. We have restaurants, we could have three or four wonderful restaurants, and Jamaica could be the place to go to, to eat, like it used to be, when we had the Jamaica House, the Brookside Steakhouse, and Fremont Moon is the one we love, and we had Mom's Kitchen. So, I would say go ahead and do it.
I was just wondering, if you do this feasible study, would that include something like Bonnie mentioned, which I think is a very good idea, where you could have the option of maybe getting a certain number of homes together to share?
You're gonna need a septic.
Would that be, would that be part of it?
This, this part of the study, so what we're, what we're proposing to do here is to identify the problems, we're not looking to get into what the solution is yet. There are, there's a lot of options, the whole idea of shared septics and shared wells comes with its own set of pros and cons, maintenance agreements between property owners. So, right now, we're just focusing on identifying the problem, and then what are the, providing recommendations for what are the next steps moving forward. So we're not gonna get into a whole analysis of alternatives.
This study will not make any suggestions.
Not yet, that would be, moving forward would be an analysis of alternatives.
Oh, Peter, and then other than Bonnie?
If I'm forced to hook onto this water system, it's gonna have a devastating effect on mine, it's about $4,000 a year for my four of the housing project, but I do support this study, because it will give us the facts so we can make some decisions. Even though what they put, Peter, come, come, you have to leave.
Come on. You can never leave.
That's sinister right there. Bonnie?
You can never leave.
Pull up, pull up, Bonnie?
The question I have, will the study ask the people that would be eligible to hitch onto this, whether they would want to or not, if they had the option?
I think that's a very good question, but I'm serving.
Yes.
For, that's gonna go out to all fellow residents.
Because I think one, at least half was not wanting.
That's absolutely a question to ask.
Clara, and then?
So, when we're talking about feasibility, that's just what this is. Is it feasible for us to do this? Is it feasible for, for us to study this, or we want to know nothing about it and just go on and do our stuff? You know, I think knowledge is power. Absolutely.
I think change is such a resistance for everybody, I don't care who you are, and I think it's so important to be preventive. And this kind of a study, if you look, it's really, feels like a preventive measure for any future disasters.
Okay, go over it.
I just wanted to say before we leave, that great little logo about Jamaica Vermont that we all use and see, thank you Bob Stone.
The impetus of this study, who's a, what conglomerate of folks came up with this that wanted to do this, to get this study? What tank, what, was it select people versus us getting, is water more important versus sewage?
No.
Are you asking me?
Yeah.
I'm standing so I can see his face, he's very, very here.
And you caught the question?
Ah, well, I'm here. One of the issues that has been kind of haunting the select board for a long, long time is, what can we do to make the town better? Define better, we'll discuss that another time, but improve it in some capacity. One of the things we come back to year and year is the water system, and that sounds to us, and I speak for me, not so much everybody, but it sounds to us like that's the place to start, to look, to see if that's feasible. We believed in our discussion that a water system was more likely feasible than a wastewater system, just because we looked around the town and there's some geography we have to do it. So that's sort of the way we're doing it. The idea is, and I think Joel was, was the point on this, you gotta try something, you gotta look for something. I'm not sure this is it, I can't tell you whether it's good or bad, but I think our thinking is, yeah, we're trying to figure out something we can do to help the town. This was a start. And I think Veda and her crew, when they put that planning, the most recent planning they planned together, did a superb job. But again, we have to start someplace, and I guess we sort of figured out in place Veda. Did I punch her to Veda?
Yes, you're not quite there. And just to kind of answer your question, I think that a lot of people have been talking about it, and, you know, the, even since, before the study was done in 2018 years ago, in order to get to that point where that study was done, people were talking about it. And it's not just this select board, it's not just the planning commission, it's, you know, people are talking about it because there's a problem. You know, if everything was okay, then what would we have to talk about? And more and more so, it's gaining, you know, some discussion, because things are coming up more and more for people. So, you know, maybe you don't have a problem, that's great, and maybe Joel's still okay, but, you know, I know, actually, I was really happy to hear that $400 figure, because I know that every six months, I drop maybe $600 or $700 on my personal water system, because I live by the river, and I would be glad to pay less than I am now, so that I can have fresh drinking water.
So this is moderator's choice, I'm gonna go here, and here, and then back to John.
I like Bonnie's suggestion, I realize that we've got to move forward to this preliminary survey, but the majority of the burden for any kind of water system is from, for, in the town, and certainly that's sort of, they should ask that simple question, do you want? Because that's where the burden, from a financial burden, would fall eventually. And I, I can, I'm looking forward to the survey starting, but I think that's, that's a burden for people.
Well, this has been an informational meeting, it's on the record, so I'm sure this is gonna go back to this group, and they're gonna collate all these suggestions. We're over here now.
I was gonna say, one of the things I think you may find to be, if you decide to go forward with the feasibility study, are the voluntary interviews with property owners, because that will begin to put, you know, on the record, some of the anecdotal evidence that you've heard, so if like, say the owners of the former coffee shop are willing to talk about their experience, then it's less rumor what, you know, or telephone game about what happened, you've actually heard it from the owner. Because I just, I mean, I know for a fact that a number of real estate transactions, they fail to go through because they do the engineering study, and there's something either, either issue with, with the potable water or the wastewater, and so then what happens is rumors start going around about how much is it gonna cost, or what was the issue, you know? Is it true the septic tank is really a 37 Chevy? No. But, but you know, it's, it's, but those, those interviews will begin to, to take what's, the whispers around town and make them real about what those issues are. And additionally, the question about would you pay? Because like Veda, what you just said about your experience, that then provides the context as to why you would pay. And it begins to also share the stories of people about what issues they may confront when they're either selling a property for retirement, or leaving it to heirs, or whatever, about what's gonna come next. And this isn't unique to Jamaica. You know, we talk to planning commissions in every town with a village, this comes up again and again and again. Londonderry, you know, we, the business owners just talk about how they're just kind of frozen in time, they can't expand, there are things that they want to do, but they can't. So, anyway, just to say that I think those interviews will be potentially really valuable.
I was curious what these problems are that people are talking about. I haven't heard any, and probably because I'm naive, and it was just in relation, so I can, and again, like I said, I'm not against the study or I'm not for it, I mean, I came here to listen to all you great folks speak, and it's been wonderful. But again, I hear a lot of these stats, and again, I'm involved in business regionally, town, locally, nationally, and some of this data I hear, how it's gonna help, I, it's not conclusive enough to me, so my question is, what, what problems are existing, and I empathize if there is a problem. Does anyone know what these problems are?
Can I take, as a moderator, can I just take a shot at this? I think the exact question you're answering is the purpose of this study.
Exactly.
Is to coalesce the information, as he said, into a packet, instead of it being, I've heard this, I didn't hear that. I think that's really what the core of this is, so that we can move on to the next step if we want to, and decide if we want to do something as a town or not. But we need this information upfront, to be able to make the next step.
Can I recommend that Joel address that?
Sure.
He was one, he was sort of an agby that kind of struck at us and made us do stuff in this regard, and the question about, the top, the people have been talking to you that is kind of driving us to this point, I think speaks to his question. Are you willing to talk that?
Well, yeah, sure. So I, so I have various, and people in this town have everything they need, some people, and they don't, but they don't see off the line. John, your experience is not really local, but it's not invalid. My experience is local, but, and it's not invalid either. Veda's experience is local, so there's all this different, as was just said, there's all these different experiences, I don't know yours, you don't know hers. That's why we, that's why we need to know. There are defects in this town, there may be defects in every town in tomorrow. There may be no way to stop the mud from declining, but what we have in this town, for instance, is, we can't get enough people on the fire department, because there aren't enough young people in this town. People don't want to move into this town. Now, somebody said, I think it was Karen who said the other day, well, young people are moving into this town. So, our experience is different. From what I hear, people are not, from what she hears, people are. But our opinions don't count unless they're part of the majority of the town, if the whole town gives the information to allow us to collect the information. Same with businesses. Same with businesses. It's true that you may not be able to buy a windsurfer easily except on the internet. But while you're doing your internet business at home, you may want to go out for a sandwich and there won't be a restaurant, or maybe there won't be a restaurant, maybe there will, but... So there's, there's all these different facets of this problem and some of us know some of them, none of us know all of them. That's what we want to find out. This study is not gonna tell us that next week we have to dig a well and break up the sidewalks. It's gonna tell us whether we want it or not and whether we can have it or not. We may very well not be able to have a water system. We want to know. I mean, there's, there's things like changing regulations, for instance, on your wells that you, the old coffee shop, they could have their business because it was grandfathered in. They haven't been open for over two years. They can't have a business there anymore without some serious investment. So some of us live up on the mountain, we don't get any benefit from drinking water, but we get a benefit from having financially successful village. We get a tax base from having a financially successful village. If this becomes a residential community, can we afford to support the road crew? Can we afford to support the fire department? You know? So, so there's a lot of things we want to know and having a study is giving us knowledge. Knowledge is a tool. We need at least the knowledge. And if we don't want it now, we might find that we're doing fine for the next five years and then everything comes crashing down. Well, then we can do it then. But at least we've made a start at it and at least we have information about it to make conclusions.
Right. I think we're in a good space to leave it for tonight.
Almost.
Can I just say?
You started it, you might as well finish it.
I want to thank the select board for having this meeting because I think it's very important. And I think that from what I understand, and if I'm not mistaken, the select board can make a decision for maybe a $6,000 expenditure without our opinion or anything like that. But I really want to thank them for giving us this opportunity. I mean, I've heard some things that, you know, I didn't know and I just want to thank the select board in general for having this meeting.
Very good. One thing I'd like to just let people know, next week, on the 9th, 7:00 PM here, we will have a floor vote as to whether we want to expend this money on this project, what we've discussed tonight. And that's all we'll be doing. It will be a floor vote and the decision will then be passed on to the select board to do with what they will from there.
Wasted. I want to thank you just from the select board, this is a really good group and I see a lot of faces and I want that input because we're, we're just a handful of people who are doing the best we can. The more input we get from you, the less blame, we'll just share the blame with everybody. Thank you very much, thank you for coming tonight, especially the weather. Thank you much.
All right.